Second Raymore City Council meeting, Ms. Warner, would you please call roll to confirm a quorum?
Councilmember Abdalguad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner absent. Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg absent. Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations and awards tonight and no personal appearances, so we'll move right on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Ms. Warner to make a report for the City Clerk's office, please.
Thank you. Mayor and council, just a reminder that the MML Westgate Division meeting will be held on October the 16th at the City of Kansas City with your RSVPs due to the City Clerk's office by October the 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask Chief Zimmerman to make a report for the Police Department, please.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. I just want to remind everyone, both here in the council meeting and at home, that the National Drug Takeback is this weekend, the 27th, at two locations here in Raymore, at Foxwood Springs and at Price Chopper, which is where we've been the last couple of years as well. So, remind everyone out there that we are going to be out there from 10 to 2, accepting all prescription drugs during the takeback, which we pass along to the DEA. But also a reminder, we actually have a drug drop box in the lobby downstairs at the Police Department for individuals who are not able to make it during this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a report for the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I want to give you an update on our current construction projects. The contractor has completed the Owen Good Forest Main repairs. The Eagle Glen Trail Reconstruction Project is scheduled to start October 7th. The Street Preservation Project, Phillips Paving, has completed the mill and overlay and patching work on Lucy Webb Road, Darabee Old Paint, and Goose Creek in the Stonegate area. They've also completed the work on Southwind, and Southwind Drive, and that project, if you recall, was originally scheduled to be finished with a chip and seal. My project manager, my operations and maintenance staff, and the contractor took a look and reevaluated that, and we were actually, for the same price and maybe a little bit of a savings, able to patch it and overlay it, so, in lieu of the chip and seal project. So, we've got a little better road surface, thanks to their work there. The final stage of that project is micro-surfacing and crack sealing, and that is, that's the second contract that's going to start in about, in about two weeks. Torn projects that council is considering contract awards for are the fiscal year 2014 sidewalk project, and on tonight's agenda is the Johnson Drive stormwater improvements. Currently, under design, we have the Gore Road water line project, that's an extension of a water main along Gore Road that will connect with the Kansas City supply line on Curwell. We are also working on the, this year's inflow and infiltration project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crass. Just to remind the, the city council that next, of the items that are going to be on next week's work session, we do have a work session scheduled for the fifth Monday of the month. The items will be a meeting with the TIF Commission to discuss and hear a presentation from Special Economic Development Council David Buscheck regarding a proposed application by Block &amp; Company in the Galleria area, a discussion on the formation of an arts commission for the City of Raymore, discussion on a city beautification commission, and, of course, the budget which is on for each work session until first reading of the budget. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
As far as I know, we don't have any committee reports this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, to include Item A, City Council minutes from September 8, 2014; Item B, City Council's special meeting minutes from September 13, 2014; Item C, the appointments to the Belt and Raymore Interchange TDD Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Bill 3005.
The second reading of Bill 3005 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing SFX, FS, that's a tough one. SFS Architecture, to proceed with Task 3 of the contract approved with that firm by the City Council on February 24, 2014, ordinance number 2014-008, in the amount of $15,490.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3005.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3005, the approval to proceed with Task 3 of the contract with SFS Architecture.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3005. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Proceed on with the second reading of Bill 3002 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3002 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling, Inc., for the construction of the 2014 sidewalk project. City project numbers 14-193-201 and 14-194-201, in the amount of $109,208, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3002.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3002, the construction of the 2014 sidewalk projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3002. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the second reading of Bill 3003 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3003 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to sign an administrative order on consent and consent agreement and final order with the Environmental Protection Agency.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3003.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3003, the EPA Administrative Order on Consent Agreement.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3003. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And maybe we have the second reading of Bill 3004 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3004 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2014 operating budget.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3004.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3004, the budget amendment for the EPA settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3004. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to note that we get through all those without going into any other variants of like 300OT, or 3OTOT, or 3004, or anything like that. Yes, I know, we have a bill coming up here that's 3OTOT6. We'll move on to new business. We have the first reading of Bill 2998, please.
The first reading of Bill 2998 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the final plat for Westbrook at Creekmore, 10th Plat, lots 284 through 310, and tracks Double D and Double E, a subdivision in Sections 4 and 5, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
And thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call in Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 2998 does propose approval of the Westbrook at Creekmore, their 10th plat. This subdivision of this phase of Westbrook is located on the south side of Creekmore Drive, it's east of Foxridge Drive, and directly north of the Westbrook 8th Phase. It consists of a little over 13 acres, there's 27 lots proposed within this phase of Westbrook. In this particular final plat, it does have a deviation from the preliminary plat. There is not an increase or decrease in lots. What has occurred is that the developer is proposing to change a street layout. Dunvegan Lane, which exists in the Westbrook 8th subdivision, was intended to go directly to the north and connect to Creekmore Drive. It would have crossed a creek that runs through that particular area. What the developer is proposing is to not cross that creek, but actually have the roadway ended in a cul-de-sac coming off of Creekmore Drive, so there'd be no direct connection of Dunvegan to Creekmore, but you would be able to get to Creekmore Drive by using Metfield Lane. What this does, again, it avoids crossing the creek, it actually increases the amount of open space that's within that particular area, so, staff thought that was a positive deviation and felt it was an appropriate deviation from the preliminary plat. If you have been out in the area, they have commenced some site grading of the area, which is allowed in Creekmore, based upon the approved preliminary plat. The Planning Commission submitted their findings on this request, and it was at their September 16th meeting that they voted 8-0 to forward this case to the council with the recommendation of approval. I included the memorandum from the Engineering Division on, on infrastructure in the area, as well as the development agreement for this phase of Westbrook. That concludes staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2998. 98.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2998, Westbrook at Creekmore, 10th Final Plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 2998. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Bill 3006. We have the first reading by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3006 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the master development agreement for the Good Ranch, a subdivision in parts of Sections 19, 20, 28, 29, 30, and 32, all in Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
And thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. This Bill 3006 does recommend approval of the Good Ranch Master Development Agreement, and it was under the adoption of the 19th Amendment to the Unified Development Code, which inserted language into the stream buffer protection provision of the code wherein it added that exempted land that was covered by a development agreement containing provisions for post-development water quality mitigation and best management practices. The land would be then exempt from the stream buffer provisions. To date, and what actually occurred before adoption of the changes to stream buffer, the estates of the Good Ranch came forward with a development agreement, hoping that that exemption would be added to the code, but they do have a master development agreement for the estates and estate villas. That was Bob Jackson's development in the Good Ranch. Subsequent to the 19th Amendment, the developers of the Good Ranch community have come forward and submitted a development agreement that would cover all the Good Ranch subdivision. I believe there's approximately 1,000 acres left to develop within the Good Ranch. The format of the agreement is very similar to what council previously considered for the estates of the Good Ranch. This development agreement, it does include provisions related to phasing of the development, dedication of open space throughout the subdivision, provisions for post-development water quality mitigation, and plans for incorporation and construction of best management practices. What we, staff and the developer, looked at developing a agreement for the Good Ranch, we tried to address concerns related to stream setbacks and buffers by dividing the subdivision into geomorphic sub-area watersheds, because it's such a large subdivision, 1,700 acres total, and so much land area undeveloped, we wanted to try to divide that land area in some way that would better address development that occurs in small phases throughout the subdivision. So, we looked at actually taking the entire acreage, utilizing watershed areas, and then when a development comes forward, whether it's a subdivision plat or a commercial development, we look at that watershed area for that development that would occur, and specifically focused on doing an assessment of that particular watershed area, and whether currently there are any issues or any impairments, if you would, within that area, and then looking at the new development and any effects that new development would have on that sub-area watershed. So, we tried to divide the undeveloped area into these watershed areas. We would identify any deficiencies, and then be able to come up with a plan to correct the deficiencies in that sub-area watershed, if there are any that need to be corrected. The assessment that would be done as part of this process would then also be utilized as a design basis for the proposed improvements within that watershed area. So, city staff, again, working with the developer, we've reviewed the development agreement, we find it meets the requirements of the stream buffer protection provisions of the UDC, and we do recommend approval of Bill 3006. We did include, of course, the entire development agreement that has been signed by the developers of the Good Ranch, and Mr. David Otis, Representative Good Otis, is here this evening for any questions you have of the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Abdalguad?
I just have a couple of quick questions, just thinking back to kind of where we started with this stream buffer, and I'm wondering, one of the issues we had with the MOUs was there was no expiration. Does this have, I didn't see anything that shows an expiration, would this ever expire?
It does not ever expire. It comes into play, of course, the ground will remain undeveloped until they come forward, so it's really designed to address development as it comes forward. And again, we're trying to address it on a, not down to a phase-by-phase, but we're trying to look at if something happens in one part of the subdivision, to address the issues within that area, to address the buffers and the watershed within that area, rather than focusing on something that may be quite a distance away. So, that's how we broke up the, the plan.
One other question. Again, when we started with the stream buffers, one of the issues was the amount of land that we had exempt in the city, and concerns about that were kind of what brought that back at the beginning. So, I'm just wondering how, how do you feel like this relates to that initial concern that had us working on that stream buffer ordinance to begin with?
I think the concern we had initially with all the areas that were exempt, either by MOU or preliminary plat, is there was no plan for stream buffer protection in any way within those exempted areas. So, what we were trying to do is gain a plan of action. If we were going to exempt an area, there needed to be a plan on how that area is going to comply with the standards. And this, this development agreement takes care of the MOU question exemption we had for the Good Ranch, because we now have a plan in place on how they will address stream buffer. I think what we need to do to move forward with the preliminary plat exemptions is look at not exempting, continuing the exemptions of those preliminary plats, because there's no plan for those, and let's force those individuals to come in and either do a development agreement, what they plan, or then if they just hold off until they come in with an entirely new preliminary plat that's subject to the ordinance. So, we're trying to, the emphasis was on eliminating exemptions, that's still what we want to get to, and I think as you'll see preliminary plats coming forward for extensions, that we won't be supporting any extensions. What we're looking at is you have to have a development agreement in place, specifically listing what the plan of action will be.
Councilmember Morehead and then Westco.
Mr. Willarth, looking at the language in paragraphs 1 and 2 with the reaffirmations, do you feel comfortable that these reaffirmations maintain the continuity between our original agreement, and in light of all the changes that we've done, that this kind of keeps this flowing properly?
The shorter answer is yes. The longer answer, as Mr. Catterett was outlining to Ms. Abdalguad, is we now have brought all of the acreage into a comprehensive framework for a development plan and agreement, and though it does not expire, Ms. Abdalguad, it can be modified, and in fact is open to modification, as each major portion of this development is brought forward. And because that, along with the many findings and terms taking part in Phases 3 and 4, Councilman Morehead, the first two are kind of wherashes and create history that we did have an MOU, but now, here's what we really have. We have a comprehensive development agreement specifically meeting 404 permit requirements and best management practices and other terms that delightful you guys have been hearing for six months out of from the experts and others, and so, I feel good that we have now caught this very important large subdivision into the net and the stream work of the comprehensive standards that we've been discussing. And so, though we're not straitjacketed to what the specific agreement for each one's going to be, it will be under these standards, and so, I do approve of the agreement and the concept contained therein, and do recommend it to the council.
Okay, but follow, now, in paragraph 3, there are several, several different references to the UDC. For example, the third, the third line, "As permitted by the UDC," well, if you look at about eight lines down, "Subject to provisions of the UDC currently in force." With that specified different language, is that meant to interpret that if there are subsequent changes to the UDC, this MOU will not be required, or this master agreement will not have to incorporate changes, and that they are locked to the existing UDC version that, based on what we approved tonight?
That was not my interpretation of it, but I'll defer to Mr. Catterett on that. My understanding was that if those provisions then changed, then our requirements would change along with that.
That was our interpretation as well, that if the UDC provisions changed, that it would, whatever was currently in force at the time that proposal came forward, or that phase came forward, that's what we would, what we, what they would fall under in the UDC.
Then, Mr. Willarth, back to just construction, language construction, when I'm seeing phrases, "UDC" as currently in force, is that to infer currently, whenever an issue arises, whatever the current UDC is, or currently in force at the time of this execution? Are we looking at some ambiguity of language?
I think we may need to look at that language, and then may, we may need to modify the to change currently to currently or in force, when applicable. I see your point, and it's well made, because we were not meaning to limit this to only those provisions of the UDC currently in force forever. We meant it would be those which were inapplicable as the separate plats and developments came forward, correct, Mr. Catterett, that you're? So, we will look at some of that language, that's a good, a good point, and if we can't reconcile it and explain it better, we'll look at working with the developer to modify it very briefly in there.
Perhaps something along the lines of currently in force at application.
Councilmember Westco.
Just for clarification purposes, does the master development agreement, does it replace the MOU? Do they become complementary? Is the master development agreement the practical application of the MOU? How do they all work and gel together?
Well, that's a very good question. My interpretation would be that this is more specific and more binding as to the specific terms that it deals with, and there's specific provisions in effect, but that the other general concepts and general agreements of the MOU relating to other subjects not contained herein still remain in, in effect. Is that how you had envisioned that with the developer, Mr. Catterett?
Yes, that's correct, and the MOU, the real intent and purpose of the MOU was to outline initially annexation, but then to, to outline the plan for land use for future rezoning actions for density within the development. So, the MOU, still very specific on very specific items, but it doesn't address anything dealing with stream buffer, where the development agreement specifically deals only with stream buffer regulations.
Other questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of, um, did you have a question?
No, I'm sitting on this.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3006.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we move Bill 3006 to a later meeting, not rule on it tonight, so the issue of the language construction can be addressed by staff.
Mr. Fearborn?
Do you wish to move to a date specific, sir?
Just the next meeting, our next public meeting.
There's a motion to delay action on this until the next scheduled council meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Obviously making the motion. I have no problem with the, the general principle of what we're doing here, and I'm happy the developer was able to bring this. I just, especially in light of some of the language issues that we've had regarding the DNR, the EPA, MOUs, UDCs, and every other acronym, my concern is, I just want to make sure that, because these are things that are going to be in place for quite some time, I want to make sure both the developer and the city do not have language ambiguity that could cause problems in the future. While I appreciate that we've stated on publicly what our intention is, since the document does specifically have a provision that says that this document is governed by what is language contained in the document, so our verbal discussions have no legal authority. I'd like to just make sure that both the developer and staff have a chance to make sure that the intention, the words mirror the intention of the parties. One meeting is not going to be detrimental to either the city or the developer, and I just think it makes sure we're comprehensive.
Councilmember Abdalguad?
I'm just wondering if, if it's just changing a few words with the developer here, is that not just an amendment we could make tonight before we approve it?
We, we could, but I'd like to have the chance to review the entire document, to make sure that, that same language, should it occur in other locations, we're not amending, and having to flip through the whole thing tonight, we may miss something. Better to have the razor view of Mr. Willarth taking a look at it along with the developer.
Other discussion? There's been a motion and a second to delay action on this, and if I have the date right, I'm gonna go ahead and say the date, October 13th meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, to the October 13th meeting. All in favor? Motion to delay passes unanimously. And the next item is going to be read in an emergency meeting, uh, reading, so I'll ask for the first reading of Bill 3010 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3010 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the replat of Remington Commercial 4th Plat, lots 8 and 9, a subdivision in Section 9 Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore Cass County, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Thank you. And since it's an emergency reading, I'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. I will once again call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 3010 proposes the replat of Remington Commercial 4th Plat, lots 8 and 9. The 4th plat and lots 8 and 9 are located on the north side of West Foxwood Drive, just to the west of the Country Club Bank. These two lots are owned by George Ward. Mr. Ward was the original developer of the Remington Development subdivision, and these are the last two lots in the subdivision that he owns. He came forward with the final plat, with the 4th final plat back in 2003, and ultimately had the plat recorded in 2004. And of course, there have been some developments within this particular plat, Country Club Bank being one of them, and then the Remington Professional Buildings to the north of these lots were developed as well. What occurred recently is Mr. Ward was planning on selling and had an agreement and a closing scheduled for Lot 9 of the subdivision, and at that time, it was discovered that the 4th plat that was recorded for these two lots omitted some information that needed to be part of the plat. What was omitted was actual dimensions of the two lots, as well as the bearings for, for determining the lot line location. Inadvertently omitted, I can say, because in looking through the file back in 2003, we have the information on plans that were submitted to the city and approved by the city. What occurred was when the plat was brought in for recording, what actually got recorded, simply omitted that information, and it's quite easily done using, using CAD. CAD stations and preparing it that way is simply layers were left off when it was printed out. They left off the dimensional information off the printed version of the plat that got recorded. With this closing that was scheduled, it brought forth the need to rectify this, this problem, and it wasn't simply re-recording the whole 4th plat, because we had multiple lots, multiple different owners. The way to take care of the problem, at least for Lot 8 and Lot 9, was to do this replat, and in essence, what it's doing is establishing the specific dimensions for those lots. We're not changing lot size in any way, it doesn't change any of the dimensions that initially was approved, it's simply getting those dimensions on the plat document that is recorded. The need for the, and the request for the emergency reading was, again, they had closing planned for last week, and with this coming up at the very last minute, we were able to get review of this matter by the Planning Commission last, at their last meeting last Tuesday, and scheduled it for this evening's consideration. I know they're wanting to close on the property, because they want to move forward with development on Lot 9, so the Planning Commission, it was at their September 16th meeting that they did vote 8-0 to forward this to the City Council with recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Westco.
Was it the, the developer or the city that omitted the extra description?
It was the developer that omitted the descriptions. It should have been caught by the city, because when the final plat comes in, it's one of our duties is to look at the document, to make sure it's exactly what was approved by City Council. So, it was missed by staff, but it ultimately is a responsibility of the landowner and who was the developer.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I'll open the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record, and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seem nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3010.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 30- Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3010, the replat of Remington Commercial Fourth Plat Lots 8 and 9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3010. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3010 in its entirety.
The second reading of Bill 3010 in its entirety, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving the replat of Remington Commercial Fourth Plat, lots 8 and 9, a subdivision in Section 9 Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore Cass County, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission met and reviewed this request and submits a recommendation of approval to the City Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri; and whereas the City Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri, in accordance with the provisions of the Raymore Unified Development Code, has held a meeting to approve by the municipality of Raymore, Missouri, the dedication to the public use of any street or ground shown upon the plat; and whereas the City Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri finds and declares that the provisions hereinafter contained and enacted are in pursuance of and for the purpose of securing and promoting the public safety, health, and general welfare of persons in the City of Raymore and their use of public right-of-ways. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the City Council hereby makes the findings of facts as contained in the staff report and accepts the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Section 2, the subdivision known as replat of Remington Commercial Fourth Plat, lots 8 and 9, is hereby approved for the tract of land described below. All of the lots 8 and 9, Remington Commercial Fourth Plat, a subdivision as recorded in Raymore Cass County, Missouri. Section 3, emergency reading, due to the minor nature of the changes necessary to the plat and to accommodate a scheduled closing on the property that involves land area included in the proposed replat, the mayor hereby authorizes the passage of this ordinance as an emergency bill. Section 4, effective date, the effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Section 5, severability, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrasal portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Duly read the first time this 22nd day of September 2014. Be it remembered that the above ordinance was approved and adopted this 22nd day of September 2014 by the following vote.
Thank you. Normally, I'd ask for a staff report, but I don't think anything's changed between the first reading and now, so I'll ask, entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3010.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3010, the replat of Remington Commercial Fourth Plat, lots 8 and 9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3010. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the reading of Resolution 1453, please.
The reading of Resolution 14-53 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri confirming the decision to install sidewalk on certain identified undeveloped lots and authorizing city staff to take the steps necessary to have sidewalk installed.
Thank you. A staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Resolution 14-53 proposes to confirm the determinations that were made by the City Council at your September 13th, 2014, special meeting, which did include public hearings. And the resolution would authorize the installation of sidewalk on 57 undeveloped lots that were identified at the September 13th meeting and are described in Resolution 14-53 by subdivision name, lots, number, address, and owner's name. Again, there's, there were public hearings held on September 13th for those lots where sidewalk was not installed in accordance with the Unified Development Code. And the council, at the conclusion of each public hearing, did make the findings pursuant to the UDC Section 445-030, and made a determination to install sidewalk on the lot and levy a special assessment against the lot for the cost thereof. This resolution, again, identifies all 57 of the lots. The resolution also would authorize staff to proceed with the preparation of plans and specifications for the installation of the sidewalk on the lots. And then, once the sidewalk was installed, would authorize staff to forward the special assessment information on those lots where the city installed the sidewalk for the cost of installation of the sidewalk. That concludes staff report.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff? Councilmember Westco.
Since the city is able to buy its product in bulk, and we bid the projects, you know, as a whole, does it actually, is it cheaper for the city to put the sidewalks in than each individual property owner to put them in on their own? Not that it's really pertinent, I was just curious.
There may be some savings because of economy scale, but it's very difficult to quantify.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1453.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Resolution 1453, the confirmation of undeveloped lots to have sidewalk installed by the city.
Seconded.
We got it. Yeah, stereo, stereo. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1453. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading of Resolution 1454 by title only, please.
The reading of Resolution 14-54 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri confirming the decision to not install sidewalk on certain identified undeveloped lots and authorizing city staff to include the identified lots on the 2015 list of undeveloped lots that require the installation of sidewalk.
A staff report, please.
Yes, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
And I suppose you're gonna say the same thing that you just did, except that you're gonna include the word "not" often.
"Not." That's really, really the only difference. We have a, Resolution 14-54 has a total of identified 11 lots that the City Council determined at your September 13th meeting not to install sidewalk on. Seven of those lots owned by individuals that were advised that the lots would not be included on the 2014 list, but they would be included on the list that begins in 2015. And what will occur in January of 2015 is these individuals, well, any other lots that are now subject to the requirement, will get notice to install the sidewalk by August 1st. And then if the sidewalk is not installed, we would have a public hearing in, probably in September of 2015 for those lots. So in essence, they got a one-year extension based upon your decisions at the public hearing. Again, those are seven of the lots. Four of the lots that council decided not to install sidewalk on were identified in this resolution because they had building permits issued on the lot just prior to your public hearing on the 13th. So we wanted to keep the record clean and identify those four lots and what action was being taken on those four lots, because public hearings were held on those. So that would conclude staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1454.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Resolution 1454, the confirmation of undeveloped lots to not have sidewalk installed by the city.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1454. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the first reading of Bill 3008 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3008 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Hettinger Excavating LLC for the construction of the 2014 Johnston Drive Stormwater Project, City Project Number 14-200-201, in the amount of $79,100, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. I'll call on Mr. Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Several months ago, engineering staff presented to council some options to address a deteriorated culvert near 1009 Johnson Drive. Council at that time selected, selected the option and directed staff to initiate the design and issue a request for proposals for this work. During that time, staff has completed the plans, acquired the necessary easement, and have bid the project. We recommend award of the contract to Hettinger Excavating in the amount of $79,100.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I think I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3008.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3008, the 2014 Johnston Drive Stormwater Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3008. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And we will move on to Bill 3009. We have the first reading of Bill 3009 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3009 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2014 operating budget.
A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This particular project that council just acted on was not budgeted, and this is a companion bill amending the budget to provide funds for the contract as well as a 10% contingency. The budget amendment we are requesting is in the amount of $86,900.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3009.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 3009, the budget amendment for the Johnson Drive Stormwater Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3009. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And let's move on to the first reading of Bill 3007 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3007 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Eco Oxygen Technologies LLC in the amount of $290,000 for the purchase of an ECO2 super oxygenation system, City Project Number 14-183-301.
Fortunately, it's not that other engineering group that we were having trouble with earlier. A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last November, they had a city council work session. Alternatives were presented to council to address the hydrogen sulfide and corrosion issues that we are experiencing with the Owen Good Force Main. At that time, the consultant recommended that we pursue the installation of a super oxygenation system. And based on their analysis, the ECO2 system was determined to be the most cost-effective system, not only for long-term operation, but efficiency of injecting the dissolved oxygen into the, into the system. This is being presented to council as a, as a sole source purchase. It is allowed, and in accordance with our purchasing, purchasing policy. At this time, I introduce Kent Newport from HDR Engineering to kind of give council an overview of the performance of this equipment and some of the history of other installations. So I'll turn it over to Kent.
Good evening. My name is Kent Newport. I'm with HDR Engineering tonight. I have with me Amanda Bagwell, who also presented to council here a few months ago from HDR Engineering. And sitting next to her, on her right, is Inken Mello from ECO2. She is representative of the equipment that we are looking at purchasing. I wanted to kind of give you some background and just kind of remind you of how we came to this point here a little bit. Talk real quickly about the root cause of odor and the root cause of corrosion, because that's why we selected this piece of equipment. In the wastewater stream, there's bacteria, there's other organisms that consume the wastewater. In fact, in wastewater treatment plants, we use this bacteria to treat the wastewater system, or to treat the wastewater stream. We use oxygen. We try to give them a food source, which is in the wastewater, and then we also assist by giving them oxygen. What we're trying to do to reduce your odors from the Owen Good Pump Station is provide a source of oxygen in your wastewater stream. And that will decrease the amount of odor and corrosion that you're having in the existing pipe system and the gravity sewer system downstream. You go to the next slide. So what you have before you is, on your left is a picture of a pipe, basically a cutaway section of a, a cross-section of a pipe. And you'll see in the red in that zone there, hopefully it looks red on your screen, kind of looks a little darkish black to gray up on our screen here. In that zone is, is a slime zone, is what we call it. And the bacteria work in that zone. They consume the matter that's in that zone and the organic matter. And they need an oxygen source. They prefer oxygen itself, but eventually they use up all the oxygen, and then they'll move to nitrates and sulfates. And when they do move to sulfates, then what they do is they produce a gas. Well, they basically produce sulfide. And so if I go to the next screen here, what happens is, is when they eat the sulfide, or they, they, the sulfate is reduced to sulfides, produces hydrogen sulfide gas. The gas then rises up in the pipe, and so what the bacteria are doing are pulling out the oxygen, any remaining oxygen in the system. What happens is, the wastewater goes anaerobic, is what we call it. There's no oxygen in there, so they have to have some kind of food source, an oxygen source, and they can use sulfide, sulfates or nitrates to do that. So what happens is, the gas then is produced. And then, in the next slide here, what you see is that as the gas rises up, it gets moisture off the top of the pipe, turns it to acid, and then the acid corrodes the pipe. And so that's how corrosion really happens in your wastewater system. So I kind of went through this at the presentation before, but I wanted to kind of remind you of the way corrosion and odor work in the wastewater stream in a pipe. This is a picture of what can happen from corroded pipes. The gentleman standing next to a pipe is a picture of the crown of a pipe that corroded away because of hydrogen sulfide damage. And then to remind you that hydrogen sulfide is also, also dangerous. You can smell it at .1 parts per million, which is a real low threshold. It's really offensive at 10 parts per million. It causes eye irritation, throat irritation at higher concentrations. It can even lead to death at 300 parts per million. When we looked at your system, what we did was we put odor loggers in to measure the hydrogen sulfide in your system. And so this graph that you're seeing in front of you now is at the release point at the bank, just here a few blocks away, at the force main discharge. And what you can see is, at the top of your screen, is 1,000 parts per million. And so what we did in this analysis is we turned off your existing odor control system, which is a chemical addition system. And as you can see, over the time frame, from when we turned it off and put in these odor loggers, the hydrogen sulfide just kept on climbing, to the point where staff felt it was necessary to turn back on the odor control system. And so then, on approximately July 30th, they turned back on the odor control system, fed it chemical, and gradually, we started reducing the odors in the system and the H2S concentrations. And then, on approximately the 3rd of August, there was a rainstorm, which then diluted the wastewater. And so typically, what you do now is you just turn off your odor, or your chemical when you have a lot of waste, or stormwater getting into the system. And so it, what you see at the end of the graph is just diluted wastewater going through the pump station. The next graph is interesting point, because it's in, in the gravity sewer system downstream from the discharge point, the concentrations were even higher. So as the wastewater traveled through the gravity sewer system after it's discharged from the force main, the concentration of hydrogen sulfide grew. So what we found out is that this is kind of spreading in your gravity sewer system, and that's what's causing corrosion and attacking your existing facilities within your system and deteriorating them. So we did analysis, we reviewed different technologies, we selected the ECO2 system. And the reason we selected the ECO2 system over the other systems is the other systems had something that either went in the pipe and had potential of clogging the pipe, where they had a spray nozzle, and the nozzles had a potential of being clogged, or you had to filter ahead of them in order to prevent material from your wastewater stream getting into the nozzles and clogging the nozzles within the systems. The ECO2 system overall had the least operation and maintenance costs of the systems we analyzed. And we felt it was the better system of the three systems that we really investigated with any passion, and we believe are out there that can be used. And then part of the reason is, is because it has a large diameter pipe feeding it, and it has a large area for rags and those type of materials to pass through, just keep on traveling up the force main. And so the other systems just tended to clog up too much and had a lot of operation and maintenance, additional costs related to them. So what we wanted to do next was present Inken and have her talk just a little bit about how this... about how this, your system compares with the Laguna Beach system, which we looked at in our study, in an analysis, and as you can see on your screen, the average flow for your system was about point seven million gallons a day, whereas Laguna Beach system had more flow, one-point-four, but the force main length was approximately the same, seventeen thousand feet, and the diameters were approximately the same. The difference, really the big difference here on this screen, is that the detention time for the Raymore system is a lot more detention time, which then causes bacteria to consume that oxygen and cause the hydrogen sulfide to develop within the system, and I'll let Inken discuss this a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Again, my name is Inken Mello, I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing for ECO two. I've been with the company for almost ten years now, and this city of Laguna Beach was one of the first projects that I worked on with, for the company. And like Kent mentioned, the force main is very similar to your conditions. Here we go. These are the H two S concentrations that were measured at the discharge of that force main without any treatment. Again, it's also a three-mile-long force main, and you see they have H two S concentrations between six-hundred and eight-hundred parts per million every morning, and you see how this pattern really repeats itself every day, and the reason why the concentrations spike up in the morning is because the sewage's been sitting in the line overnight, and had all that time to become septic. First, it depletes, it consumes the oxygen, becomes septic, and creates a sulfide overnight, and then you have the morning flush, when everyone's taking their showers in the morning, it flushes out all that septic sewage, and at the discharge of the force main, you know, have the H two S that's released, where, you know, where you have the headspace in the gravity sewer system. And that, of course, causes your odor problems, massive odor problems, and actually dangerous levels, and then also the corrosion that goes along with it. And so what we're doing with the system is, we're putting in enough oxygen so that we maintain aerobic conditions, we give the bacteria that preferred source of oxygen, dissolved oxygen, to maintain aerobic conditions throughout the whole length of the force main, and throughout the entire time sewage sits in the force main. And this is a graph, the day that we started our system up, you see that morning spike there at six-hundred parts per million is around seven o'clock in the morning, seven-eight in the morning, and then you see where we started the system up, is where we're, you're adding the dissolved oxygen to the sewage, and what happens first is that oxygen actually oxidizes the existing sulfides, so you see how that graph kind of tapers off, and then where it goes down to zero is where now you have aerobic conditions and you completely prevent sulfide formation at that point. And that's what we're able to maintain with a system, and this is like a couple of weeks later after, you know, while the system's been started up, those little triangles there show you the switch to the next day, so it's a week, I think, it's been recorded there a little more. But that's really what we see across the board with all our installations. The city of Laguna Beach, like I said, this system was installed in two thousand and six, they had this operating successfully for two years, and they installed a second system upstream of this one to treat the influent into this pump station. There's another water district in Southern California that watched them closely as well, and they installed a system as well on another force main in two thousand and eight, and they had that running also for two years, installed a second system on another force main, and we have a couple of other repeat customers, which really is the best reference for us. Overall, we have about, and we share that information with Micross and HDR, so they have, they have, you know, all the references. We have, overall, we have about forty installations across the country, and a hundred percent success rate, and the reason why we have this great success rate is that we do our due diligence upfront, we turn down a lot more systems than we actually do, because the use of oxygen is very predictable, because you can really, we know how long the sewage sits in the line, and we know how much oxygen the bacteria will consume over that time, and then we look into the system upfront, and we've done this due diligence here, and it's a good application for, as long as we, you know, are able to put enough oxygen in to maintain those aerobic conditions, we know it's going to work. And if it's not the case, then we turn these systems down, so we really don't do any systems, you know, that we can't keep up. And so on that, you know, we realize, you know, it's a big investment upfront, but it also has very low maintenance costs, operating costs, so there is a life cycle, a payback. You know, over time, it'll cost you less than using chemicals, it'll certainly cost you less than having to replace more pipes that are corroded, but we will back up the performance of our systems, you know, unfortunately, we can't really pilot test these systems, but we will, so what we guarantee is, we guarantee an oxygen transfer efficiency, a minimum oxygen transfer efficiency of ninety percent. We will guarantee that we will raise the DO to a certain H two S, DO level, in this case, a hundred and eighty milligrams per liter, which will last you throughout the length of your force main, and then we'll also, you know, because that's obviously what you're concerned about most, is the H two S concentrations you want to reduce though, so we decided, even though that's really nothing we can influence per se, but we will guarantee that that's going to go down to ten parts per million, because we really, we do have the experience, and you know, this is what's going to happen. So, with that, you know, that's really, hopefully that's satisfactory for you.
Thank you. Questions of staff or presenters? Councilmember Holman?
Is the, is the system's efficiency, does it change with weather or temperature conditions? Obviously Laguna Beach, California would have a much more moderate and consistent climate than what we do here in the Midwest with freeze thaw cycles and that kind of thing.
Well, we assume the worst-case scenarios for our design, which would be, yes, highest temperatures, because you know, that limits the amount of oxygen can be dissolved, yeah, I think we went with twenty-five degrees, and that's the water temperature, I don't think it gets much higher than that. So, we always design for the worst-case scenarios, and then, you know, anything that gets cooler, you have less biological activity, so it'll be, it'll be easier.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of bill three zero zero seven. No. We'd better get our screen back, or I'll have to hand you my notes, huh?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve bill three zero zero seven, a word of contract for ECO two super oxygenated system for odor control at Owen Good Lift Station.
I second it.
You didn't get to play this time. We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of bill three zero zero seven, is there any discussion? Councilmember Hubo?
Yes, we have determined that for some time that we've had bad odor there at Sunset and Fifty-Eight Highway, and that something needed to be done because of the length of the force main. My concern is, since we've already been told that it is dangerous, that what the H two S is dangerous, why are we waiting two weeks to have the second reading of the contract? Why don't we get it all done tonight and get it on its way? Because it seems to me this is very much of a health and safety issue.
Well, it's, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Fearborn in just a minute, but it's my understanding that we can temporarily control through chemical means.
That was going to be my first point, sir.
Okay.
And also, second point is that, in the meantime, upon approval of the council's first read, there is still a third component of this that has to come before you, because what we're buying has to be put in, and that is not a sole source issue, that's a question of bidding out to a construction firm to get that in, but we wanted to make sure, and then they also have to build the equipment. So, there's some time here, even though it sometimes rises to dangerous levels, we can keep it below that with, by treating it with chemicals, albeit expensively, but that's what we're doing right now, to bring it down below the dangerous levels, while at the same time completing the process in a methodical manner.
Thank you. Councilmember Westco?
Once the system is installed and it is successful, when other municipalities want to come and view it, can we actually charge them to help, you know, defray some of the costs?
We haven't determined the ticket cost yet, though, right? Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, oh, we have somebody? Okay, get it, get it, catch my attention. Councilmember Holman?
I just, I was curious, I know we're early in the phase here, and assuming this passes and we purchase this, what would be our anticipated timeline for purchase, delivery, and installation? At when will we have this working? Mr. Grass?
About four months, and the fabrication of the equipment times very well with finishing the design bidding and then bringing forward a contract for some of the construction work, so it should all come together very well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? And I'm going to, I'm going to go slowly this time and look at everybody, and all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next takes care of new business, we'll open the floor for public comment, please identify yourself for the record, keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. See nobody come forward, I'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to mayor's staff communication. Let me get my list of randomly generated council members, and this evening, Councilmember Westco, you get to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start off and just say that Councilmember Kellogg, Morehead, and Holman, we did not get the message to all wear blue shirts, so.
Wow.
I mean, we wore the, you know, the off-white, so.
I was going to point that out.
Both Councilmember Morehead and I had a chance to attend the MML conference this past week, a lot of good conversation, you know, and the part that I enjoyed the most is being able to speak with other representatives of municipalities, you know, and just have candid conversations, and I would encourage everybody in the future to take advantage of those opportunities. Referring back to, I've got to scroll back up, bill three zero zero five, which is what we passed on, which was item A of our agenda tonight. As I look at this, since the direction of this project is kind of moving more towards a city building as opposed to, you know, necessarily a parks construction, would it be appropriate to do a budget amendment and move it to where we pay for it out of the capital fund that's actually been designated for the Civic Center?
Mr. Fearborn?
Yes, sir, that can be done.
Okay. I'd like to have conversa, you know, like I said, based on the results from the citizen survey, I think that's probably an appropriate action to move forward. Since we have designated funds for the Civic Center, let's go ahead and use those, let the park, you know, have the remainder of their, of the amount that they set aside so that they can put back into their programming, and actually let the Civic Center budget, the capital budget, support the rest of phases three and four.
The capital budget can be used for the study that leads to the capital project.
Okay.
And we can have, we can have that conversation in work session if it's appropriate.
It probably would be appropriate to do that in work session.
Yeah, I'll add that to next week's work session, that my, my first brush is that we would bring a budget amendment to the council for test, sir.
Yeah, I don't know about everybody else, but I like to see the numbers in front of me before I make any comments.
Absolutely, sir.
And then finally, just to finish up.
I thought your five minutes were over.
No, I still have thirty seconds.
Okay, good.
Attended the Raymore Festival Parade, it was very well attended, you know, the master of ceremonies, you know, our mayor did very well at reading and announcing everybody's parade entries, so it was a great day, a lot of people turned out, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Morehead, or Councilmember Morehead.
I'm going to also talk a little about the Missouri Municipal League Conference that we attended, very good conference, and it is a wonderful opportunity to get to meet different council members, and, you know, we had some wonderful topics, things on dysfunctional teams, which was pretty eye-opening, appropriate investments for government, governments to do, even the use of GPS in city vehicles, so we had a lot of good, good topics that came up. I do want to mention, next year is in Kansas City, and there's a lot of these things that the Missouri Municipal League has a certified elected official certification, and a lot of these classes deal with everything from the Sunshine Act, which we had the conference here with the gentlemen, things on governmental ethics, even just how to do, you know, look at charters and ordinances, personnel law, planning and zoning, a lot of different topics. I'd really, with it being local next year, I'd really strongly encourage, because there's some, there's at least one weekend day, so, you know, those who have the traditional eight-to-fives would at least have a chance to attend some of it, so I'd really encourage that next year. And I also want to point out that Jeanne is next year going to be, and you're going to have to help me because the acronym was pretty long, but she is the state president of the City Clerks Association, what's the proper?
The acronym is M O C C F O A, Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers, and yes, president-elect this year, president next year.
Yes, so, we have a chance to be able to go down and have her be one of the presenters, and so it's great to see all the good things Jeanne's doing with this as well, so I just wanted to make sure that gets brought up, and yes, the mayor on Saturday did his wonderful Bob Costas announcer time, announcing all the floats, and did a wonderful job, great to see that. And I also want to thank HDR for coming out and giving the presentation, this is not a topic I thought we would, I would get to learn so much of, joining this council, but it is very informative, good information, and a wonderful need for our city. And again, you know, I know this isn't going to be a real late meeting, but I'll wrap up by saying it's great to see how many people stayed, like, almost everybody stayed, especially, thank the high school students that are here, glad to see you guys are doing that, and hopefully we'll put on a good show. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubo?
I used to enjoy going to those MML meetings myself, but I found out, once I started wearing hearing aids, that they make no provisions at all for those of us that are hard of hearing. They don't even have microphones, they don't have other things, and they have made no attempt to do it, so I think that's something that we should look into, because I'm not the only one that wears hearing aids in the state of Missouri, I know that for sure. One of the things that also came out in our MML magazine that you haven't had a chance to read yet, talks about legacy, and if you'll remember, when we had our retreat in May, we talked about what kind of a legacy we wanted to leave, and we said, well, we'll get back together in September and decide. Well, September's almost gone and we haven't decided yet, so, excuse me, one of these days, some of us are going to be gone, and we won't have had a chance to determine what our legacy is going to be, so let's get together and make some decisions, let's not waffle anymore.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
No comments tonight.
Councilmember Holman?
Is there still time allotted for the Blue Shirt Caucus, or did Mr. Morehead use up our, our group time, or?
Well, I, yeah, you're down to about a minute, so.
Sorry, Kevin. I just had two quick things. Again, I'd like to echo Councilmember Morehead's comments, the high school students are here. If the assignment requires you to stay till the end of the meeting, you got to bargain tonight, because sometimes these go really long, and we're going to get out relatively early this evening, but it's good to see you here, thank you very much for attending. Second thing I wanted to say was, my appreciation to staff, in particular Mr. Fearborn and Mr. Catterett, was unable to attend the, the meeting that we had on Saturday for sidewalk installation, and I had comments on, on one lot in particular, and I also want to thank Councilmember Boehner, even though he's not here tonight, reading the minutes in detail. You guys did a fantastic job of including my comments and thoughts on that, and I appreciate it. It obviously came through, as it read very well in the minutes, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellogg, you're out of time. We'll move on. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, everybody, for being here. I will apologize for my tardiness tonight, I was at another meeting and came as soon as I could. I missed the staff reports and all of the committee reports, I assume their committee report was made tonight, okay, then I'll just go ahead and use this opportunity for that. We are, the roundabout subcommittee will meet this Wednesday night, and the last email I got is four-thirty, am I correct, Mike? Four-thirty, and we will meet up at the roundabout. The purpose of this meeting this Wednesday night is a tour of the site, and there will be some, I believe, some balloons flying at different heights, so we can get perspectives as to different heights of things down there, so if you see balloons flying down there, it, I'll say it's my celebration, or this, this, this subcommittee's celebration, because it is moving forward, and that is what's going on, so, kind of excited about this Wednesday night. Also, I was able to attend the parade, the Raymore Festival Parade, great day for a parade. Great day for a parade. Absolutely beautiful, wonderful turnout. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your expertise, I'll say, in, in announcing.
Fortunately, they give me the script to read, so all I have to do is read it.
I wonder if you practiced it, because you did a good job, so. Anyway, and thank Mr. Westco for noticing our, our Blue Shirt Caucus down here, you know. So, but anyway, thanks a lot.
Thank you. And Councilmember Adel Gwad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to concur with Mr. Morehead. I have surely learned about a lot of things that I never even thought to be interested in while on the council. And I want to also echo the kudos for the Festival and the Park Committee. My family and I spent quite a bit of time there Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the parade, and enjoying the festival, thanks to Dan Barnes and the Lacy's, and that's just one small bit of that committee, but thanks to the entire committee. It's a great festival that they put together for our entire community. It brings people together here, and it's lots of fun for adults and children. I would like, kind of on that note, to challenge the council next year to maybe be a little more involved in that. I went to the opening ceremony on Thursday and was the only representative of all of us there, which was kind of sad. Usually there's, there are at least two or three of us there. So I challenge the council to be a little more involved in the Festival and the Park next year, coming to your opening ceremony. It might be kind of fun for us to have a float or have some cars with the council in that parade, representing our city, our city leadership. So I'll challenge you all if you'd like to accept that. And I had one more thing, but it's gone now. I guess that's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I'll recognize the students in the audience also. We usually can tell when school's back in session because we have an audience. I will also note that on the evenings that you're not here, I, I know this is riveting, on the evenings that you're not here, it is streamed live, online, and you can watch it on TV, so. There's been a couple of council members that mentioned their education on sewer systems and wastewater systems. And I invite any council member that would like to attend the Little Blue Valley Sewer District or the Middle Big Creek Sewer District, of which I am a board member, you can come on and, I mean, you can learn a lot. And in fact, I believe one of those two was looking at a super-oxygenated nation system along with the Lee Summit, if I remember right.
Little Blue.
Little Blue, okay. There is GPS in our city equipment, I understand.
Yes, there is.
And the last thing I'm going to mention is the CAN program, the Caring About Nutrition Program, a part of the Raymore Peculiar School Foundation, is doing a food drive for the week of October 6th through the 11th, if I remember right. There's information at the Raypek School website, and they're looking to collect anything, everything from cans of soup to shelf-stable milk, snack foods like granola bars and that sort of thing. The number of students that are being provided with weekend packages is down from last year. I think it's something like 68 students this year, so. And that's all I have, and we have no reason to go into executive session?
No, sir.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before I move to adjourn, I, there was one thing that I failed to mention, when Councilmember Adel Gwad mentioned echo. I, I've noticed that there is much less of an echo in this chamber. A lot of the sound baffles have been installed, which are aesthetically pleasing, and you definitely can hear everybody, and I'm, I'm sure it's much better out in the audience. So I encourage everybody to come to a council meeting and, and enjoy the sound. But with that, I move to adjourn our September 22nd, 2014 meeting.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are in adjournment. Thank you, everybody.